Action items, including consideration and possible action on addition to the Sturbridge 250th Committee, consideration and possible action on the appointment of Nicole Darush to the part-time dispatcher for the Sturbridge Police Department, consideration and possible action on a one-day liquor license for the Hamilton Rod and Gun Club for ICE races, consideration and possible action on acceptance of the donation from the Federated Church of Sturbridge and Fiskil in the amount of $250 for the Sturbridge Police Department, consideration and possible action on naming Jeremy Jalbert as Acting Facilities Manager with an established weekly stipend.
Do we pay him?
Uh, consideration and possible action on the grand easement for Nine River Road, consideration and possible action on execution of agreement with National Grid for easement use for the Grand Trunk Trail Extension, consideration and possible action on the sealer of Waits' proposed fees, consideration and possible action to approve temporary mornings, floats, rafts, et cetera, consideration and possible action on acceptance of a donation of a piece of property encompassing land in Sturbridge and Brimfield, consideration and possible action on signing of an agreement between the Town of Sturbridge and Real Estate Research Consultants for the Board of Assessors for a proposal for FY 2023 and 2024 Personal Property Collection Evaluation Services and FY 2025 Personal Property Reevaluation in the Town of Sturbridge, Massachusetts. Consideration and possible action on the signing of an agreement between the Town of Sturbridge and Bishop Associate for the Board of Assessors Collection and Valuation Services interim year adjustments FY 26 and FY 27, consideration and possible action on the acceptance of the resignation from the Veterans Agent, Michael Strupa, consideration and possible action on the acceptance of the resignation from the Assistant Conservation Agent, Field Inspector Aaron Carson. Old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, Citizens Forum, then adjournment. So with that, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'm with that. I'd like to just take a moment of silence. And again, I just don't think it can be overstated what the firefighters and first responders did in Los Angeles. I don't think the, what they've gone through has been processed or the, or the pain, I mean, that's the second-largest metropolitan area in the entire country and it's the largest city in what I think is the fifth or sixth-largest economy in the world. And it was absolutely devastated with a fire. And so just, it's everybody at home, everybody in the room. It cannot be overstated what those first responders and firefighters did and all the firefighters from Canada and Mexico and all of our other allies. It's, it's just a vital, vital function and we have to, as we think about our own community, prepare for similar challenges as we move forward. So with that, please take a moment of silence to think of them and the victims of the tragedy. Thank you. Public service announcements. Mary Lou.
I have nothing.
Mary Ellen?
No.
I have nothing either. Robin, anything from you?
Yeah, if you want me to do my update very quickly?
Yeah, if you just, if you can.
Uh, yeah, okay. Where is my?
You've got one minute.
You got one minute? Um, if I can find my update. Okay. Let's see what I did. Here we go. We'll flip past it. And just very quickly, Street of Beach Road, things are progressing. I spoke with the owner of the abutting property. They are able to make what DOT would require work with a one opening closure on their part and a new road opening there. So we are continuing now to work with the engineers to get a more detailed design going since we know that we're on track. And then my next step is now to meet with the abutters on the other side to confirm that they are still willing to relinquish that property. So we've talked to the one abutter that actively uses it. Now we're talking to the other abutter that really does, has indicated in the past that they have no issue. Noble, we are very pleased. DOT has agreed that the most recent traffic counts do in fact meet the stoplight warrant. And now we may look like, well, we're going forward with the design phase now and very hopeful that within a reasonable amount of time, we will have a stoplight until DOT decides to do whatever else they're going to do with that road. But in the interim, it looks like Noble, it has the green light, no pun, Noble has the green light to keep going. Facilities, Jeremy Jalbert has stepped into the interim to serve as Acting Facilities Manager. Heather Blakely has assisted a bit with some of our janitorial services. And I just want you to be aware, I am looking at this point to restructure on how those departments work together and most fiscally prudent way to address this vacancy. I'll touch on this more when we go into the section on Jeremy's stipend and some thoughts I have on this. National Grid, again, a reminder, Customer Assistance Event at Joshua Hyde Library of March 13th from 3:00 to 7:00. It's just an open house. People can come in and have questions and concerns addressed. And that is it for me today.
Great. All right, on to the public hearing. Mary, if you could call?
Okay. National Grid has made a petition to the Sturbridge Select Board to install one JO pole on Whittamore Road, beginning at a point approximately 260, 16 feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of Whittamore and Fiskil. National Grid proposes to install a pole 2650 in a public way for new infrastructure to support load of OH lines, Sturbridge, Mass. National Grid also requests permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, wires in the above or intersecting public ways. The pole hearing will take place Monday, February 3, 2025, 6:30, 5:00 PM at the Sturbridge Townhouse, Second Four Veterans Memorial Bar.
This conference will now be recorded.
308 Main Street, Sturbridge.
Okay. And we, from Grid? And I think we have people online as well?
We have Andrea on the line as well.
Okay. Nice to see you again. Can you just state your name for the record?
Robert Williams.
Robert. So what's going on?
It's a big project for commercial customer. There's some infrastructure work that has to be happening and we need a pole location on Whittamore Road to install equipment that's needed for the service that this customer is putting in.
Okay. All right, questions from the board?
So this is a new pole that hasn't been, it's not replacing an existing pole?
No, this is going to install a new pole in the public way. That's what we're petitioning for.
Okay. And where on Whittamore are we talking?
Yeah, it's on the map. It's, it's up, I know it goes up Fiskil Road and it's kind of west off the intersection of Fiskil Road. It's like right near the intersection. It's not far off of it.
Yep.
No, I saw it on the map. It was more for.
Yep, yep, for the public.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions?
Any trees coming down in association?
No, I believe the area is clear of trees. It's a pretty open spot.
Conservation has reviewed this one. So this has gone to our conservation agent.
Now, I know some of the poles going on, well, not some of them, all of them are going to be much taller and bigger. This is just going to be the same size as everything on Whittamore, obviously, right?
Yeah, it's not.
Just a traditional, just a traditional pole.
Yeah, it's just a normal pole size for three-phase overhead.
All right. Any other questions from the board? All right, this is a public hearing. Anybody from the public want to chat? Doesn't seem so. All right, do we have a motion on, well, anything else from the board's side? All right, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All right. Do we have a motion on the substance of the request?
Want to do it? You usually do. I'll do it if you don't want to.
Go ahead.
You want me to? Okay, I'll make a motion that we authorize National Grid grant the petition to install one JO pole on Whittamore Road, beginning at a point approximately 260 feet of the center line of the intersection of Whittamore Road and Fiskil Road, which includes the installation of pole 2650 in the public way for new infrastructure to support load of OH lines. I also move that we give National Grid permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public way.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor? Great, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Moving to department reports, sir, from the Building Department.
Bill.
Thanks, Bill. How are you?
Good evening, board.
Are you settling in, Bill?
Good, good. Nice and busy like I like it.
All right. This is your September?
Yeah, so.
Twenty-four, okay.
September through December.
All right, floor is yours, sir.
I won't bore you with all the permit numbers, but the vast majority were, through them four months, were solar and woodstows, pellet stoves, it was that time of the year. Again, a lot of raise and rebuilds. The rest are just miscellaneous. We'll give you a quick summary of some commercial projects. The movie theater, they ran into some delays with curtains. So they're pushing for mid to late February opening now. It was January, but they got pushed into February. The Senior Center is at the point of doing final inspections now. I'm going to be probably touring there tomorrow or Wednesday, just walking with the contract to see if anything pops out that we need to address.
Great.
505 Main is the eight-unit apartment building. They're in finished stages now, doing all their finishing there. 150 Chelton Road, Interstate Towing, they finally got a CO. They finally jumped through all the hoops with DOT and went through all that. So we were there, me and Gene went there last week and he was issued an occupancy permit. 277 Main, the Public House, they've been doing, they did a big roof and siding renovation, a lot of rot repair, a lot of interior beam restorations in the dining room. They're wrapping that up now. The Stonewall Grill, as you guys know, is closed and a new restaurant's moving in there, Mama Italia, Mama Italia closed down and the Fish Store, there's a new restaurant in there, Trail Dusters. Everybody's been ranting and raving that it's pretty good, so. Zoning enforcement that I was working on with fire, the only one, all the other ones, we got wrapped up. We got rid of some illegal apartments, some unsafe situations. 453 Main, there was a very dangerous, rare fire escape that was going on for years. We finally got them to comply, pole permits, and they're in the process of rebuilding Egress now. So that's all I have. If you have any questions?
I don't have any from the board.
I just have one question. You answered it like a few weeks ago because I reached out to Robin. I had somebody inquire about whether new construction could still have oil heat.
Yes.
And then you explained that under the new standards as the stretch energy code, is that right?
Correct.
That if you're, if you're not as efficient with your heat, then you have to be more efficient in another way to fall within a certain range?
There's trade-offs. So there's HERS radars that evaluate your home, the way you're going to build it, what you're going to put in.
Right.
And they can, they can maneuver all that to get it to pass with better windows, better insulation.
Right.
There's trade-offs, but you could still use fossil fuels.
If you're more efficient in other ways, if you're green in other ways?
Exactly.
Okay, so it's not an A+, but you get the permit.
Right.
Have we had any houses that were denied under the?
No, no, the HERS radars usually are able to pull it off.
Okay.
The state's pushing by 2050, from 2025 to 2050, they want all homes to be all electric in Massachusetts, which I don't, I don't think it'll happen, but that's, that's their goal, so.
Isn't it a percentage of renovation as well? That trips the HERS, that's the other thing?
Yeah, so if you put an addition on your home, that's a thousand square feet or more, then it triggers the new energy codes.
That's where I think people can get tripped up more than anything is an addition. They don't realize because it's not new construction, that that is something they need to be aware of.
Another thing that just came into effect yesterday is ADU's accessory dwelling units. So anybody that has a home in a, where a single-family resident is allowed, is allowed to put an accessory dwelling unit on their property. It can be a detached building in the backyard. It can be, if you have a two-family with an attic, you can put it in the attic, you can put it in the basement. And Gene worked on some zoning bylaws to tighten things up.
You'll see that all at town meeting. We have to update our bylaw to comply with this. The goal was to allow for more housing, if you will, and so it opens up for a lot more single-unit type places in residential areas.
They still have to apply, they still have to comply with the building code, zoning, all that stuff, but anybody, anywhere is now allowed to add an accessory dwelling unit.
Got it. Now, what about the new neighborhood going in off of 131 and Fiskil?
Blueberry Estates?
Is that what it's called, the retirement?
Yeah, so they had a model home up there. They just finally moved it and set it on a pad. And that's as far as they've gotten so far.
So when do they think, I've had a couple people ask me, when do they?
I don't know. I can find that out for you.
Yeah.
But he's, they're just in the very, very beginning stages, so I foresee a couple of years.
A couple of years, okay.
If I had to guess, but I don't have an exact.
Even a rough idea.
Yeah, I'll find something out for you.
Thanks, Bill. Anything else? Anything you mean to cut out, Mary? So, okay, moving to Robin, the Verizon files.
So we got a letter from Verizon asking us to write a letter of support. They're looking to expand their fiber optic network into some of the underserved parts of the town. It doesn't impact our own fiber as we have our own. It may allow for better service to different places. I did talk to Al Menard on our cable advisory. He's going to make some phone calls, but he doesn't believe that it's going to help us have competition, if you will, because it's still not going to serve the whole town like Spectrum does. But at this point, I'm just asking for your support for me to write a letter of support to Verizon to move forward with adding some infrastructure in the town.
I, for one, I don't see any issue with it. I do think we probably need to, and it might be too ambitious, but I think we do probably need to get the numbers around municipal internet and start to figure out what those costs are as well, because if we're going to keep running into, you know, again, it might be prohibitive, I have no idea, but if the internet infrastructure resources here are inadequate for both our businesses and frankly, anybody working from home. And, and it's not that, it's, and it's not particularly for mobile either. It's, you know, double whammy. So I don't, it might not be realistic, but I think, we know, I think we chatted about it at a, in a peripheral way before, but I do think it's worth, I know, I know Shrewsbury has it and obviously they're a bit of a larger community than we are, but it just, you know, maybe, and maybe it doesn't work out and maybe it doesn't make sense, but I think we should be starting to look at that because, you know, it just sort of makes sense. But that's sort of an aside.
No, I totally agree. Well, I don't know a lot about the process, the regulatory process. We write a letter in support and it gets presented to the state? How does that, like, to whom is it addressed?
I think it's a DPU, right?
Yeah. To public utilities, okay.
So they, I think it's DPU, but I think they need a municipal support to run the additional infrastructure.
Yep. Actually, it goes, this directly goes to the Massachusetts Broadband Institute and the MasTech Collaborative.
Is that part of the DPU?
I don't know what those are.
It sounds like it's a special, it's going to fall within some.
Yeah, I'll get you details on who they are.
I'm just curious.
Yep.
Yeah, but I don't think there's an issue with anybody supporting it. It's just, it's good.
Broadband equity access. Yep, I'll get you more details on specifically what the MBI's relationship to public utilities is.
Great. All right. So moving forward, consideration.
Don't we need a motion on that?
Yeah, sure, we can do a motion on it.
Okay. Make a motion to authorize Robin to draft a letter of support to the MBI.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Yeah, I see.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward to our action items. Consideration and possible action on Sturbridge 250th Anniversary Committee, appointment of Hollis Turnbow and Sarah Ponticelli.
So Mr. Turnbow actually was supposed to be on last week's. Ms. Ponticelli is also interested. These are further people who'd be on our 250th celebration group.
Glad to hear it.
They will have their first meeting next Monday. It is an open public.
I know we supported it. I forgot how many members that we want to have.
I think I, well, we never, we left it open-ended. I left it open-ended, right? Because it's not really going to have controversial voting and whatnot. It's really going to be more advisory for me to bring forward ideas to you all and historic. I would also ask for the board's support. I would like to make Mr. Brier an honorary chair if he is interested of this. I know he's busy with his own things, but, and it's probably hard for him to get to all the meetings, but I do think, I would like to at least recognize Mr. Brier in some formal way on this committee.
Oh, absolutely.
I want him to actually work on it.
Well, I want him to do his own things.
I'm not backing him into that yet, but you know I'll be picking his brain.
Yeah, that lazy bones guy.
Oh, yeah, he doesn't do anything historic around here.
All right, then I will, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Turnbow and Sarah Ponticelli to the 250th Celebration Committee meeting.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Good enough.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Chief, consideration and possible action on the appointment of Nicole, and how am I saying my last name?
Dever.
Dever, I'm getting a little tongue-tied at the end of the day.
Bachelor.
It's a part-time dispatcher for the Sturbridge Police Department.
Good evening. So tonight I present to you Nicole Darush. She currently works for the Worcester Police Department, or the Worcester Regional Communication Center, as a 911 operator, so she has some experience. She lives in town, grew up in the area, so she looks like she would be a great fit for us. She's partially trained. She just has to do emergency medical dispatch, which we do in-house and online here in Sturbridge. So I'm bringing her forward, recommending that she get appointed as a part-time dispatcher effective February 4, 2025 with hourly rate of 25.15 per hour.
Okay. Any questions?
I think she'll do a great job. I've known her for a number of years, yep.
All right, then do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Nicole Darush as a part-time dispatcher effective February 4, 2025 at the hourly rate of 25.15 per hour.
Give me a second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Welcome aboard.
Mary, I appreciate the opportunity.
All right. Great. Moving on, consideration and possible action for a one-day liquor license for Hamilton Rod and Gun Club for February 9 and February 16, 2025, from 10:30 AM to 6:00 PM for Sturbridge ICE races located at 24 Hamilton Road, Sturbridge, Mass.
So this came into us today. The police chief did review it. I believe he was comfortable with it.
Yeah.
Oh, and we have them here if there are any questions. Hamilton Rod and Gun is here.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
No.
Sounds like a great event from, to what I heard.
Yeah, so we haven't heard any since prior to COVID, right? Between COVID and mild winters. So this came up at the last minute. The promoter asked us to host it and it makes it much easier for us to control the situation if we have that one-day permit versus trying to keep everybody inside the clubhouse.
Oh, makes sense. I will make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for Hamilton Rod and Gun Club for February 9 and February 16, 2025, from 10:30 AM to 6:00 PM for Sturbridge ICE races located at 24 Hamilton Road in Sturbridge, Mass.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Great, thank you for coming in.
Come and visit.
Yeah, I'm going to pass this, well, oh, you need to cut, yeah, so we're going to pass, we're going to take it before you leave or you're going to come pick it up?
Could if you wish.
Yeah, why don't we just pass it and then, and then Francis will make a copy real quick.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Here you go, Mary.
Okay. With that, we can walk and chew gum. So consideration and possible action on the acceptance of a donation for the Federated Church of Sturbridge and Fiskil in the amount of $250 for the Sturbridge Police Department. I'll make a motion to accept it with great thanks to our wonderful friends at the Federated Church. I mean, they're just, they're just wonderful neighbors and they do so much for the community. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great.
Who's second in that?
I think they both did.
They both did. Give it to Mary.
Just put Mary.
Yeah.
All right. Consideration and possible action on naming Jeremy Jalbert as Acting Facilities Manager with an established weekly stipend.
So a couple of things on this. First, this is one part of it, but I also want to inform the board, I've called a Personnel Committee meeting for next week to consider the future of how we handle facilities in the town, looking for better efficiencies, financial prudence, and better service overall. And the schools have a model that actually works with a combined IT facilities director with assistance, obviously, because you can't take two full-time roles. So we've spoken with Jeremy and Barbara and, and we are very comfortable in looking at a combined IT facilities director and looking at hiring basically a help desk coordinator and assistant, sort of an admin help desk coordinator assistant with IT skills to support Jeremy. That likely next year would be in a part-time capacity and then if we need more, we can always expand it. You don't have enough in the budget to expand it a bit if we have to and then maybe down to a full-time depending on the workload and I don't want to overburden Jeremy. Jeremy will become procurement trained, Massachusetts procurement trained. Right now Shelley has official training. We'll have that way, a second person. I have knowledge, but I don't have the official training, so it'd be good to have a second person that could, that has that official training. He will also have to get OSHA trained. All this will be put in front of personnel on Thursday, but I wanted to share it a little bit with the board and if you have questions or concerns, we have Jeremy here to discuss, not to be on the spot about him, but his feelings about this and, and the, you know, the nature of the work.
So in essence, you're, I'm sorry, through the chair, you're combining both positions, where we have the two separate with Robin.
So combining both positions and creating a part-time, maybe full-time assistant for him?
You're excited about doing it?
Very.
Oh, okay, good.
Very excited.
Jeremy, listen.
I've been thinking about it for a little bit of time. Then the opportunity came up and the school has been doing it. I was talking to Greg Rosso and Steve Rich. That's kind of the model they've been going. I said, well, that's kind of interesting and it's been in the back of my brain and then this opportunity came up. So IT department has been growing for the last five years, ever since I've been here. And I think this is a good next step for the IT department to grow.
And you know, IT and facilities are more married than they may have been in the past, even the Senior Center project, the wiring for that. And when we're working with the amount of technology that we have, so much is electronic, so much is IT-based, and it's not like we have in-staff carpentry, carpentry, construction going on. Most of that is contracted out. Jeremy certainly would be able to do that and monitor that. And again, if we have somebody to assist him, he would, we talked about oversight of the custodial staff. I think we are going to leave it with facilities. We were talking about possibly putting that at Public Works, but that, there's some labor questions with that.
Yeah, I guess.
And eventually, yeah, it gets a little more complicated. So we'll leave that as it is and maybe down the road, we'll look at those positions in a different way. But for the current staffing that we have now, it works to leave it with, with facilities.
So I think it, personally, it makes a lot of sense. You've always been very professional, Jeremy, and I know everybody, you're a very, you always strike me as a calming influence. No, I'm not, I don't mean it in a, I don't mean it in a lightly way.
Very true.
Or is it that everything's so crazy? Um, but the, um, so yeah, I, I think it's a sound, uh, decision. I, does any question?
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally on board.
We'll likely.
And I like the idea of that we're using, you know, everybody already knows and respects, as our chair was saying, Jeremy, as opposed to hiring somebody else from the outside. Um, I think it's better when we promote from there.
There really is, and that is the calming influence, like when something's not working, okay, Jeremy's got it. And I, I think, um, the other thing is that fiscally, it looks like even if we were budgeting a more starting-level salary than the person who left, obviously, we would always budget a little lower, we're still probably going to be saving, if we do that position part-time the first year, probably 20,000 to 25,000. And even if we move it up to full-time, I think we figured we'd be saving 7,000 or 8,000 a year in doing this with the numbers that we've tossed around loosely with Jeremy. It's a win-win.
Yeah, makes sense. So, uh, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Jeremy Jalbert as Acting Facilities Manager with an established weekly stipend.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? I was gonna abstain, but all right. Uh, shows my numbers.
Do you, do you know what this, have you negotiated? You know what the stipend is?
Yes. For, for now, if, if, I mean, if you want that shared, I can tell you for, for. Yeah, in the short term.
It's in one of them. I just didn't, oh, it's.
It's a weekly stipend of $500.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Let's see.
If he's up for the challenge, I think he's the best man for the job.
Excellent.
Thank you very much, and all the kind words.
All right, we appreciate you, boss.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Get out of here.
Thank you.
Go home.
Sit down for him.
All right, guys.
Before you regret it.
I know. All right, consideration and possible action on the grant of easement on Nine River Road.
So this is an easement that was supported through town meeting and whatnot, but what happened was this easement involves OSV, and there had been a restriction between OSV and the original property owner. So they had to make an amendment, and we're just signing. This is a property that's being used as part of the trails.
Okay.
So it just needs a signature.
So I will make a motion to, uh, accept the grant of easement for Nine River Road in Sturbridge, Mass. from Lynn Peterson with our great thanks. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
All of those in favor? Great. All right. Um, moving on, consideration and possible action on execution of agreement with National Grid for easement use for the Grand Trunk Trail Extension.
So this, I don't think it actually made it into this packet, but this was in your packet last week.
Okay.
So this is a National Grid easement that, a National Grid agreement that we need to do work and to continue to use that as part of that Grand Trunk Trail extension. This is the area we're working with tie-in bond and DOT along Haynes Street to cross 84 eventually. Uh, there, so it requires National Grid easement. The reason this took so much longer for me to get in front of you, the easement's pretty standard language from grid, except that they require an additional insured. The additional insured is going to cost the town $500 a year. We, the trails can eat the cost of it in the construction for the first year, the Trails Committee. And as I said, I am looking into our property and casualty insurance right now costs anyway. But National Grid, we are looking into the fact that recreation is supposed to be exempt from easement costs with National Grid, apparently, but they're saying this particular thing doesn't fall under that for some reason. So we are continuing to bark up that tree, because if we don't have to pay it, why should we? The question is, are you willing to pay $500 a year going forward for use of that, to sign off on that National Grid agreement?
Seems to make sense to me.
Oh, definitely. So, I mean, you had the agreement in your packet last week. If you want a motion for me to be able to sign it, um, it, the standard, the other, the rest of the language is pretty much standard language.
Okay. Um, questions, thoughts?
Well, no, I'm all, I'm all for this, but then I do have a question about the extension, but.
Okay. So let, well, let's do the, I guess we'll do, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to, um, have Robin execute the agreement with National Grid for easement use for the Grand Truck Trunk Trail Extension.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Is, is this the extension that everybody's already using that was put in place? Or is this, is this for a further extension of the, because we extended it from Westville, right? Through, down to Fakwa Road. Is that?
No, this is, this is beyond this. So this is where you crossed, like, 15 and head toward OSV?
All right, because I was gonna say, we're already using.
Like where the little park is in the dock.
Okay. Now, do we, did we get an easement for the other part that goes up to Fakwa Road?
Well, we have Nine River and One River. That One River one was fine. The Nine River one had the complication from when they took it from OSV. There was an old restriction when they bought the land from OSV. That's why that one was on for tonight. But right now, the only thing that's outstanding is this new extension for, and basically, you know, the funding for that, this project hasn't even fully been determined. This is a DOT, joint project with DOT, because it involves Route 15 and Route 84.
And where is it going to go all the way to again?
It's where, right now, people come off and they walk down 15 and then walk over the bridge to get over 84 toward the back end of OSV.
Yes.
This is to create some type of safe pathway through there, but to, some of that work involves National Grid easement area.
Because where it comes out, there's a.
That'd be awesome, so we're gonna be able to.
Makes the, never mind even the trail part of it, just the crosswalk part of it is.
That whole intersection.
Oh, no, I agree. And what kind of timeframe is that?
It's, it's a long way out.
Like a couple of years?
It's probably a few years, because the funding hasn't even been fully established. It's a big project.
Okay.
Because it involves traffic, road diets, and things like that.
So, uh, makes a lot of sense. Okay. Um, I think we should put the mooring piece aside for tonight, just when we have a larger board.
We just need my sealers. Don't forget my sealers.
Yeah, we won't do, we'll do the sealers, but the, the, um, yeah, there just was on top of it.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Um, so just that's the item below, if that's okay with you guys.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, it was a lot of conversation, so in case they, Mary and Chase have anything to add. Um, but going to J, consideration of the sealer waits proposed fees. So my understanding, Robin, is that the pay, the fees on page two here, which, I'll just read them out loud so that people at home can hear. It's, uh, the fees scaled in pounds per scale. Over 10,000 pounds, $100. 5,000 to 10,000, $57. 100 to 1,000, $57. 10 to 157, and 0 to 10, uh, 57. And then capacity measures per tank. Fees are vehicle tank indicator, $57. Each 100 gallon or fraction, $57. Then it goes on to liquid measuring meters per tank, per pump. Gasoline, $57. Vehicle tank, $57. Vehicle tank gravity, $75. Then it goes to liquid meters bulk storage, bulk meter, $75. Company supplied, $100. Scanners per register, 1 to 3 registers, $70. 4 to 11 registers, $150. Uh, 11-plus registers, $250. And those, again, per register. And with, Robin noting to me that largely this is just a pass-through of the state fee. There is a, um, what'd you say, a $2 administrative fee?
On the, on the tanks, the $57 ones, I think I have about a $2 administrative fee. There's a slightly larger administrative fee on the larger ones.
Okay. But is it less than $5?
Yeah, it's minimal.
Okay.
Some of them, yeah, some of them we haven't had done in a while, so what on those, one of those tank ones that was 100, the state hasn't done one for us in a while, so I don't have a current price, but I looked at what other communities are doing as pass-through.
Okay.
To make it equitable. This is only on businesses, and really, it's a service they're required to have.
Okay. I mean, it seems fair to me. Any thoughts, questions, concerns?
No, it seems reasonable.
I am working with Rep. Smola on trying to find a way to have the billing and the whole thing turned over to the state, because this, this isn't worth it to us to ta, I'm not taking this over because we want to.
No, they should just be doing, if they're gonna, if they're gonna be doing it, they should just do it.
Totally an unfunded sort of mandate.
Yeah.
So we are, we are working with him. He was unaware of the, the status of that, so.
All right, well, I will, uh, make a motion to approve the sealer of weights fees has proposed and just read. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Okay. Okay, and then we're consideration and possible action on the acceptance of a donation of a piece of property encompassing land in Sturbridge and Brimfield.
So I got a call from Mr. Roland Leclerc in December. He has a large parcel of land, uh, at Brookfield Road. It's 15.7 on our side, and I think it's about 19 on the Brimfield side. He would like to donate both sides of that to the town of Sturbridge. Um, I spoke with Conservation and Planning. Uh, both feel that it's a valuable piece of property for us to accept. Uh, I talked with Ann. Ann said that there's really no tax implication for us. Uh, we only collect $16.76 off of that. I have to look into the process of us owning land in Brimfield, but we, you know, South Bridge owns a little portion of land in Sturbridge, so it's not unheard of that municipalities do this. Basically, what I'm looking for is if the, the board wants me to follow through on this, and which way do we want to go? Do we want to go with this? Because if we do it as a conservation-taking, I put it in front of, or conservation-acceptance, we put it in front of the Conservation Commission, and then the board accepts it. And I don't believe that that requires a full town meeting process. If we take it as a straight donation, it's a town meeting process. Six and one half dozen, there's really nothing, no money going out except for recording fees.
I think we probably just put it in conservation then, because it seems easier.
So if you all would like, I'll turn this over to Lauren, our Conservation Agent, to follow through. I'll work with the Brimfield end of this and have it go in front of CONCOM, see if they concur that it's something we should have. We have a lot of conservation land up in that area, and, um, it's an area we really are interested in protecting.
That makes sense.
May I just ask what the motivation is for donating?
I don't know. He just called and said he was interested in donating the land. It's been in chapter land for years. A lot of those people just don't want to see the land developed down the road. Some of those people are donating, I, I can't speak for this particular gentleman, but we are seeing discussions, and we've had discussions on people who are very concerned that if they leave the land in the family, it's eventually going to get donated through the next or the following generation. Uh, we had this discussion on, on Lauren's Conservation and Coffee Hour. How do we protect it? When people donate land, that's one of the ways they actually feel confident that they're protecting it for years. I don't know if that's this particular gentleman's motivation, but for many people, that is the reason why they donate.
Well, I think it's, it's exceedingly generous, and we very much appreciate it, and will, uh, if he, if the purpose here is to make sure the land is protected, we will protect the land. Um, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the donation of a piece of property encompassing land in Sturbridge and Brimfield generously by Mr. Roland Leclerc and to authorize Robin to turn it over to Conservation.
Well, actually, so I think CONCOM has to vote it first.
Before we can accept it.
And then you can say, so what I need is the motion that you are interested in me moving this forward to Conservation.
So I'll make, move to amend the Mary Lou's motion to place this before the Conservation Commission to return to us for approval, or deny. All right, uh, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, great. All those in favor? Great, very nice. Um, consideration and possible action on the signing of an agreement between the Town of Sturbridge and Real Estate Research Consultants for the Board of Assessor's Property for Proposal for FY 2023 and, and 2024 Personal Property Collection and Valuation Services, and FY 2025 Personal Property Reevaluation in the Town of Sturbridge, Massachusetts.
These next two, L and M, are both, all of our contracts that assessors have. We had extensions at the same price in some cases, or extensions with agreed-upon increases. So we were within our procurement on this. So Ian is just looking to move forward to renew.
Any questions?
So that's who we always use these.
We have the last, the last couple of years, yes.
Okay.
All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Yeah, he's having it. All right. Um, I'm going to move that we approve the signing of an agreement between the Town of Sturbridge and Bishop Associate for the Board of Assessor's Collection and Valuation Services interim year adjustment FY '26 and FY '27. Do we have a second?
Okay.
All those in favor? Okay. Okay, so moving on, uh, again, I'm going to move that we accept with great thanks the resignation of Veterans Agent Michael Strupa, um, from his position.
Would like to wish Michael all the best.
Yeah.
And his family.
No, it, yeah, it's, it's, yeah. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we moved to accept.
With a heavy heart.
Yeah, very.
With love and a heavy heart to him and his entire family.
We're always here for him.
God's blessings to them.
Yes. And we are looking at, um, handling this going forward if we want to partner with another community. There are, Mike was becoming restricted by VA, which was requiring 1,000 hours a year versus the 500 hours we do. I'm working with Leslie to see if we want to increase the hours that we have our own Veterans Agent, or if we want to partner with another community. So I will let you know, um, when I have a, what type of a plan to propose for you on this within the next week or two.
Great. Um, all right, and then moving on to P, I'm gonna, again, move to accept with great thanks uh, uh, the resignation, uh, from the Assistant Conservation Agent, Field Inspector, Aaron Carson.
I want to thank Aaron as well for her service to the town.
Yeah, well, we're gonna, she's still in town, so she's, she's, she's stuck with us. Do we, all those in favor? Great. And then on to old business. Mary Lou?
Um, I had a resident ask me, um, I guess National Grid was supplying power to the new apartment buildings on Main Street there, and wanted to know why there's no power going to the new parking lot yet.
Uh, we have, it's being held up for permitting, I believe. It's a permitting issue. We will have, we're waiting to get power there.
Okay.
It will have it, the DOT thing.
Probably just because that lot had power.
That's why they have it, and we don't.
Yeah.
But we will.
It's a good question, though.
It's a fair question. We will have it.
So that's, all right, old business. Mary Dowling?
No, I don't have any.
Uh, I have none. New business? I have none. Mary Dowling?
No.
Mary Lou?
Nothing.
Um, all right. Uh, correspondence, I think we noted that the, oh, did I note it? No. Um, oh, Mary Lou, Mary Dowling, you want to read? Just know what it is?
Uh, correspondence from the Department of Public Utilities, Department of Telecommunications and Cable DPU, um, an inquiry on pole attachments and conduit access on public rights of way, and a letter from the Republican Executive Editor Larry Parnas, letter from Carol Hysick of Sturbridge. Hi, sick.
Yeah, sick.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, all right. Then moving to minutes, I think we can only approve, or look at the December 16th minutes with the board has constituted this evening. So do we have any edits on these minutes? Yeah, I'll take it in.
Wow, I wasn't here for that. Under Public Service Announcements, um, one, two, fourth one down, um, there's an F between Volunteer Staff Menu Member, Susan Bogren.